Are you ready?
No, you're not.
Hello, everybody.
But they sit next to each other. They're not related.
This is the April tenth, two thousand twenty-four open public meeting of the Needham Library Board of Trustees, being held via hybrid format, allowing remote attendance. I'll take a roll call to confirm that trustees, library staff, and any other persons anticipated to be on the agenda are present and can hear me. I'll start with the trustees. I'll say first, no, Airheart Drake is traveling and will not be able to join us this evening in person or remotely. KK Hill.
Here.
Michael O'Neil.
Here.
Robert Pennant.
Here.
Megan Small.
Here.
And Joshua Small, we welcome.
Thank you.
The trustees, your first meeting. We're happy to see you and me, Jay Fialka, by vote, I'm here also. Library staff, acting director, Demetrius, Demetri Kiriakas.
Here.
For the last time.
Our team.
Oh, okay.
Get you back.
Uh, technology specialist Danielle's not here, but we have Allison Smith, what's your title?
Reference supervisor.
Reference supervisor. Happy to have Allison Smith here. Administrative specialist Jenna White. Uh, program specialist, secretively Gay Allen Dennett, remote. Uh, right, you're here, Gay Allen.
Yes, I am.
Okay. And recording secretary Faith.
Here.
And Erin, thank you. Erin Bassett, of course. No one here from the Library Foundation, and I don't think there's anyone here from the town, I think this is, yeah, this is it, okay. Uh, this meeting's being recorded. If there's a problem that prevents the completion of this meeting, we will reconvene at seven o'clock PM on May fourteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, I called to order this meeting of the Needham Board of Library Trustees at seven oh seven, uh, PM. Um, and as is customary, uh, we ask if there's anyone from the public who has any comments, uh, to share with us. Uh, we're happy to hear them now or any other time. It doesn't seem to be.
I do have a hand raised from Tom on the other side. Um, I can, give me a moment, I can promote him, I think, uh, I can allow him to talk. There he is.
Oh, yeah. Okay. I just wanted to say that, uh, uh, you know, it's been a year since you guys have had to live without me. Yeah, and, and I'm so, I'm so, you had such a busy year. I'm so glad that you younger people with more energy with the, than I was. So, so I think you had a great year and I am look forward to the other thing and I, and so I just thought I'd stop in and say hello. All right, take care.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Great, nice to hear from you.
Um, and the first thing on the agenda even before we, uh, approve the minutes from the last meeting is to invite Allison Smith to introduce herself to all of the trustees as a group. Most of those have probably met with her already, but maybe just, you know, whatever you feel takes, should sharing with them, you have to do here.
Uh, so my name's Allison Smith, I'm the reference supervisor. I've been here for just about seven months now, so not super. I have met, I think, most of you in person, others who I feel like I've met because I've watched the trustee meeting recordings. Um, I have the pleasure of participating in the NEF trivia bee a couple weeks ago with Airheart, and Kay, and Dimitri, and a couple other staff members. And we, uh, handily transcribed some fifth graders.
Same age who I like to play basketball with.
So that was a good time. Um, I was coming here, I came here in September from Bama where I was the community outreach librarian, so, um, that's been something, uh, community outreach has been something that I've been looking to help, uh, increase and help facilitate more community need. Um, and the staff, and I feel like I've been here a lot longer than seven months. The staff has been great, the community is great, and, um, yeah, I'd be happy to be here.
Please, any questions?
How, yeah, we really delight, the life, the reference is such an important lifeblood of the library and it's great to have you here and, here, only good things, and we're really happy to be with us and, and also the fact that you have community outreach experience is wonderful because that's such an important thing for us.
I'm also a big fan of the community outreach effort, but I'm, I'm wondering, on top of all that, what exactly is the role and responsibility of the reference supervisor in terms of what you're, what you're doing every day? You know, so that we can understand, you know, how that department works and what it's responsible for.
Sure, so, um, mostly overseeing the reference desk, which is typically the, um, adult section, you know, um, uh, we're overseeing the public computer area, the printer, probably your scanner, that kind of stuff. Um, I set the desk schedule with the full timers and the part timers. I order for almost the entire fiction collection with a few slices carved out for specializations like, um, Gayon and Sci-Fi. Um, and Megan, who does paperback ordering, um, as well as yellow word languages and information in databases. Um, what else?
So it's a lot more than just reference because, you know, it's a wider, the wider responsibility.
Yeah, and I, I am working on getting a few more workflow things sort of smoothed for staff to like, trying to get the study room booking into an online modules.
Oh.
Can do that online. Um.
Our website doesn't allow for that, the way, the way it was created? I guess not, but, I know, I guess not. It seems logical that it would have.
This module like can be integrated, but we didn't.
I see.
Yeah.
But we're gonna, we're gonna be asking you money, so. Friends, the foundation bell ringing. That's kind of, okay, got it.
Tracking statistics for, for reference for, um, errors and, uh, end of year tracking and, and statistics and all that, monthly reports. Um, have some things down from administration, some things up to administration, that sort of thing. Allison with P and getting us onto Libstaff.
And I saw that mentioned in, in your report, can you maybe summarize exactly what, what that is and how that works?
Uh, sure.
Some of you, especially, this is Josh, that's the first, first meeting, and we can take advantage of that, even if we don't know what it is. Excuse me, explain.
You don't know it, I.
Stop scheduling software so that, um, each staff member has their own profile connected to their, their work email address. And you can basically set a desk schedule publicly, some desk schedule, so that everybody knows who's on desk at a certain time. And depending on how you use it, you can also know, you know, if somebody's has a meeting.
What's it called again?
Libstaffer.
I see. But it's not really for libraries specifically, it's for?
It is actually.
It's literally for libraries, yeah. Interesting.
And this could be very useful also because it's helping us analyze trends and what gaps we have in coverage. And in terms of posting, we talked about like circulation, we want to make them sustainable so in order to have a regular vacation weekends and whatever else we need, we can see the highs and lows, like, where we need the most coverage, where the, in fact, it was a lot more data than we had before this place.
It's also been really useful to make all the different desks in the library feel like one entity because a lot of times, children's being in a room by themselves don't necessarily know which staff members are where. So it is something they can access from their phone at home, from their work computer, they can log in and then they can see like who's in reference. Um, is Jenna at town hall, is Dimitri in the meeting, is somebody got a vacation day scheduled? So it's been, uh, much more useful for us to figure out when we can work together on tasks.
And then also, yeah, holds all of the time off requests of this vacation, some time, many meetings, um, comp time, personal time, any of that stuff is all in one place and doesn't have to get stuck in like email months before all of that.
It, it sounds like exactly the sort of thing Robert would think will appreciate seeing in place when he, when he gets here as a sign of how, how well-run things are. Any other questions or, we're happy to see you, you know, we've heard, we've heard your name a lot when the director's report talks about all of the great things that are going on each month, each month, but it's nice to see you just being in person and share our things. Thanks.
Great, thanks.
Um, I think we're at the point where I, I'll request the most who approved the minutes of the March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. I'm scared, you want to make a motion.
Vote to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
And Rob, second. Uh, any discussion, any, uh, comments about the minutes before we, uh, take the vote to approve them?
I'll read them.
Yeah, yes.
Once they're up online.
Josh received the materials?
I did not, I did not have seen it, no.
Okay.
Sharing, so. Yeah, it's been very nice.
Okay.
Um, and you know, you can vote or abstain or whatever, you know.
I will abstain for them.
Oh, um.
Get Joshua's email.
Yes, yeah.
And if you just write your email, I'll have a good picture, please.
So anyway, I, I guess, uh, does, does anyone have any comments? Uh, if no comments, Airheart's, with Airheart not being here and everyone else in person, can we just have a vote by acclamation?
We can.
Okay, uh, all in, in favor of approving the minutes, please say, please indicate your approval.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Uh, it's unanimously passed. Uh, I'll mention that I haven't seen any minutes yet for the special meeting we had, uh, to, uh, approve or, or, or to discuss the new director. Faith, is that something that's gonna come down the line?
Well, I was told we didn't need them.
No, is that right? We don't need that?
Right, emails about Katie said we don't, that there's one, uh, item on the agenda and it was understood to be like the unanimous vote.
Okay, that's fine.
And it was, it was reported so that in case it was not unanimous or whatever, on the discussion, we could have asked, uh, but since it was pretty straightforward.
That, that's fine by me, I don't remember seeing email come, Katie, but that.
That was for me, I opened you, okay.
Okay.
I talked to Dimitri to make sure that I wasn't needed and that's what Katie had told him, so we didn't.
Okay. Um, then I'm gonna turn to the agenda. Uh, and ask Dimitri for his.
Sure.
Last interim director's report.
Be my last.
Uh, and we'll take advantage of this occasion, Dimitri, to thank you for your service above and beyond for an extended period of time. Been a comfort to know that, that the library was in good hands with you and Jenna and Faith and Gay Allen and everyone else uh, who's, who's, who's been taking care of business while we've been going through the relatively extended process for finding a new director, so thanks so much.
Thank you all very much for your kindness and support and patience with me. And, uh, I really appreciate it and made my best.
It's been hard, but.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, your director's report.
All right, okay. So, let's go through some of the general highlights. Um, Gay Allen Dennett was running the RDU program from preparation all the way through the two-day event, March tenth and eleventh. We had a total of two thousand six hundred and seventy-one attendees, which is four hundred more visitors than last year. That was, that's great, good event. Um, let's see. Selectors and recruits doing great throughout with their collection development spending. Uh, it'll make the transition next to still here a lot easier as well as hopefully creating, avoiding creating any backlogs for tech services, for administration, for county county. Expect that to go through this year. Um, our new social media management system, SocialV, is up and running. A few years in, we're meeting to discuss best practices and address any questions, concerns, and prism. We'll be looking around up to the largest social media team in more long-term planning, Allison's for it. Aaron, that's kind of serious. Aaron's been getting a lot of input assistance from the volunteers, probably the volunteers. They're helping direct team program offerings while performing some of their community service.
Well, that's great. Then how many of them are there? Several?
Uh, it was several, it was more, it was in the team. I don't remember exactly. Yeah, um, and there were, there are some that have been, um, jumping in for things right now, there's a book club that she's, that she actually has one of the volunteers to the most of the.
That's great.
Texans Department's Mayor Dalton worked to rebrand the former express routes collection, the Lucky Day Collection. And the relaunch happened on April first.
I have one of them, but I.
You do?
Actually, it's for yesterday, I did not get to finish it some days, mostly because it's, um, it's very interesting, it's Ireland, it's very nineteen eighty-four-ish, where there's people being like rounded up in people to be part of the teachers union and stuff. Um, so it's, I'll have to take it out again.
Is it like a seven-day-long, the Lucky Days?
Day-long, probably, by college, and it's very, almost like Dream of Consciousness, like David Royce, you know, because there's like no, um, no paragraph breaks or.
Oh, wow.
Or.
After, after that, all these.
Yes, yes, it's a portrait of artists.
What's it called?
It's called Prophet. But it is very, pretty close to sort of that, like Secret Police type, and the main character is, is a mother who has four kids and has been. Holds it all together, won the Booker Prize in twenty twenty-four. I bring me him back, but we'll copy it again.
There's one, it took a, um, we have it in express collection, about twenty fifty-four.
Okay.
By, I didn't change the previous, I forget the other, but it is fiction and it takes place in twenty fifty-four.
Did you read the first, did you read twenty forty-four?
Thirty-four, right?
Thirty-four, yeah.
No, I haven't, I want, I want to go back.
You might go back and read that one first.
I, well, I'm halfway through it now.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go back to.
Twenty thirty-four is pretty good. We should put a book discussion on the agenda.
No, it's, it's, it's twenty thirty-four, twenty fifty-four, twenty thirty-four was the guy who wrote the Admiral, some fiction writer. Yeah, basically, a, a, how could World War III start? And then twenty fifty-four is twenty years later.
Yeah.
Like, post-World War III, yeah, exactly.
Dangerously not fiction anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is all. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
But that was good to have a little bit.
Yes, yeah, I mean, it was also around Patrick's Day and it's an Irish one, so I was a little confused, I thought it was the same Patrick's Day thing. Um, because I, well, I picked it up a week ago, but now I know that it's.
That's a testament.
Yes.
Lucky Day Collection. So, okay, thank you, great. Um, moving on, tech services system Andy Kyra has been working the entire membership of nonfiction, the vacant shelves further back on the second floor, you may have noticed that.
Yeah.
They're filling out.
Yes.
Uh, we're making way to move to biography, we allow more language collections to the space vacant in the front shelves, the nonfiction section. This move will open up a tremendous amount of space for the other shelf collection. It's really quite tight right now, and this will allow Aaron to increase her holdings and give her a lot more. For that correct, so that's gonna be great. Um, Digital Media Service Librarian Jackie Bayton, uh, spent a really great job with, with the budget for her materials, who's able to increase patrons. Hoopla allows me from seven hours per month to ten, given our hoopla power is a better overall experience. And we care for the monetary because their pricing starts with weeds, so unpredictable spikes, which I asked, what's hoopla is?
It's an, it's an online borrowing system.
Uh, similar to like Libby or.
I use Libby, I was gonna ask this, this does not apply to Libby.
Well, we pay, Libby is something we pay, you get from the network.
Okay.
It's more, it's more of a collective, and hoopla, we pay directly to the users for need of users. So we have, you know, sometimes it's overlap, but.
One of the things with, um, Libby and Overdrive is that it's eBooks, but we can control which is available and how many titles we have. Each title comes with a set amount of licenses, um, and each title can, if we have one copy of the title and we ha, it has twenty-five licenses, then one person at a time up to twenty-five can use it. Um, and we can carefully control when, when do we want more, when will we let it take off?
For Libby.
That's for, which is Libby, yeah. Um, the hoopla is different in that it allows for simultaneous usage. Um, and it, it is a per-person use and you, we don't get the same control. And when libraries talk about it, hoopla is more of a black hole and we can just keep shoveling money straight into it. Um, and if we set it up so that everyone can do as much hoopla as they want, we end up spending so much money. So it's been, that one's been trickier to corral because we want people to access what they want to have while also being able to predict costs.
Are things likely to be more readily available in hoopla than Libby?
They're always available, if it's available in hoopla, it's always available.
Yeah, that's the key. I don't know why it always, always.
So it's like, so theoretically, there's a very popular book that just came out, a thousand people can request all of them.
Exactly, and they, and we will pay for each of those.
And the library has to pay for that, so.
And we will pay for it after the fact, too. Whereas with Overdrive eBooks, we pay for it in advance and then we let it use, so it's a lot easier to budget.
So do we have way of controlling the hoopla use, so we just, we don't?
There's, it is an art instead of a science, and Jackie is working really hard to manage it.
Do all libraries do both?
No.
Yeah.
A lot of libraries who are not very well-funded do not do hoopla at all.
Do we find that hoopla is used more often than Libby?
Um, no, I would say that Overdrive is used more, I think, Overdrive because it works so well with Kindle and the existing eBook structure. Um, it's really, it's really easy for our patrons to adopt it and, and use it on their Kindles or the eBook readers. Um, the hoopla is a little pickier, it doesn't work as smoothly, you can't pick it up and put it down as well as you can with your, with your Kindle book that you borrowed your Overdrive slash Libby holdings from. Um, and they also do, uh, so there's books, audiobooks, and I believe that there's also videos and movies.
I think I've watched things.
Yeah. Um, so a lot of times what happens is someone discovers it and they get really excited about it and they burn through their borrows per month.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so it, it can be a balance too with how much we want to advertise it, knowing that it will then be seven thousand dollars that we sell.
So the maximum borrows per month are in Libby?
Yes.
My, my experience with Libby, I do the audiobooks in Libby, is that it's not an amount per month, but it's an amount you can have out at any one time.
Yes, so it's a completely different way for our patrons to access it and create a list and go through it, and you have twenty-one days to listen to your book and you can renew it. Um, there's also, if you don't know this, we can help you figure it out, you can put on every single network in Massachusetts.
Okay.
So you can increase your holds.
I have Boston.
Eighteen.
But that's.
Yeah, um, so from, from our point of view, from a budgeting standpoint, from, um, and uh, helping our patrons figure out how to use it. Um, I mean, hoopla, it's, it's a different beast, it's a lot of the same materials, it's just a totally different way of accessing it.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Our head reference Allison was just here, uh, met with reference DZ Database to discuss switching to their service, the end of our current contract with Records USA. Um, we're gonna move ahead with that in June, as they have the offer of better use experience, we're starting their career resources. And it's also a little cheaper than, uh, that we pay two grand a year for Records USA, which is two million, and it is the, it's given us fourteen hundred. So it seemed like we could deal with, we liked the interest better, so. It was Allison, which is her head. So.
Uh, this is instead of, um.
Records USA.
Okay.
Yeah. They, they do very similar things with interest, just.
Okay.
Um, Gay Allen, Mary, and Allison worked together on a February, the new recurring firm called Pop and Chaucer. On the first Wednesday of each month, patrons invite three pop and feed and snack meat for a taste of poetry. Several poems by well-known poets we write and discuss, and no need to be mid. And. We're looking forward to continue with that. Um, Pedro Paul Dubin, writing every story time, Wonder Garden, newly opened preschool, fifteen children, three adults, and March through six, deposit reactions and interest in further collaboration. Mimi Aziz, who's one of the, she's, uh, part of technical service department. Um, so. We continued above and beyond, on top of their normal duties, they were able to catalog many, uh, library of things, which is something we have been able to do a lot. As well as address several items that have been lingering in many months. Also, we wanted to do a special, Starbuck City, uh, my circulation department, since September two thousand three, since we've been helping out technical services. People really keen to learn, uh, what they need to do, she's enjoyed doing it. She did a lot of hard work, really helped them out while we weren't at least, uh, substantially as staff in that department. Um, and then these are, there's no way we could have, could even get items out to patrons, great we did without her help, so we wanted to do it again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Really, really appreciate it. She's returned back to her normal schedule, circulation, we're just as happy to have her back. Um, the YMCA and the children's department held a steam night in the children's room on March three seventh, using our robots for thirty families attending. And we were fully more, uh, joined activities with the YMCA. Paul, coordinating Bruins, PJ Drive again, this year collecting seventy-eight pairs, Jones at the library. One of our part-time librarians, Shin Clibrang, Elliot Monty, conducted a pop-up library during Liberty's United Elliot School. Where do the pajamas go?
The Bruins have a drive for it.
They have a drive, they collect, they distribute them.
The Bruins wear them.
They're wondering why they're all extra-large pajamas. Probably more. Uh, let's see, and Elliot had a really successful, uh, pop-up library, according to the library person. They should twenty, like, first, most, and that's at the Ellis. Um, our other children's librarian, a part-time Gina Fattigan, learned how to do cats and asking catalogs, to create our real-life lists. And that's a really good tool for, for helping our young readers find books that were their favorites. And we do, we do the through our post for our shelf blockers, and if you don't know what that is, it's through our code on the collections in children's room, the scanner we develop. Okay, personnel, are most books coming now with two-awp?
No, this is something that Gina works to.
Yeah, Gina, Gina works. Um, let's see, under personnel, um, please announce, you already know this is Wayne Paranazry, who detects services and circulation. Uh, film position vacant, we mainly account retired in January. Uh, Louis's first day next week, March twenty-fifth. Worked for the NAD, we've been public library for the eighteen years, free of welcoming personalities, so if you've never known.
Yes.
Um, as well as a well-fixed instruction institutional knowledge about our collection. The, uh, CRLS circulation, as well as cataloging, reporting, staffing. Ross and Circulation, who's all, they're cataloging magazines, who's responsible for numerous reports each month. Should we bring these responsibilities, she brought them up with their office, so, and the tech services. So, that is great. Position vacant by the land, full-time circulation system, position posted, we don't, we, we, I can tell you that's an internal posting. Uh, I can share this one candidate in particular we're interested in, and that's the only one supplied, so we're hoping to make that happen pretty well.
And then you'll have to fill that position.
We will, and that's what Libstaff is doing, because that will give us three to four part-time circulation systems, for now we have a lot more information in terms of calendar, schedules, and we're looking for rather than just, you know, we, we're doing a lot of patchwork. It's unsustainable. We have one staff member who works like every weekend, I don't know how long that'll last.
Yeah.
So we have to make it rotation.
Yeah.
A little more balanced, and that's, that's what Libstaff is doing. So. Maybe we should be substantially, well, and we have part-time.
You still have page position.
Yeah, there, it's an ongoing, it's all. Okay, now we're the part of the gift report. So, uh, during the gift, Sally and Bob Davis, memory of Dale Mungary, three dollars. Catherine Andrew, memory of Jean Bolger, thirty dollars. Heather Simmons, an acknowledgement of an art sale, six dollars. And from Devin and Chiara, I'm saying, Matt's, I'm talking, Yara and Chiara, an acknowledgement of our sales, seventy dollars and two cents.
So we need a motion, uh, to, uh, approve the gifts and, uh, anyone make a, make such a motion?
I'm happy to move, we approved the.
Sir, and Michael seconded. Josh, I don't see why you can't, you can't vote, vote in this one.
Yes.
Uh, uh, all those in favor, please indicate your approval.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion is, is passed unanimously, uh, with Airheart, uh, not here with us today.
Thank you. All right. Moving on. Building your grounds, items completed, I don't have anything to do with that category, I have pending. Uh, insulation third floor, door alarm by signal was put on home. I forget if that was there, students or something, they, something they had to backorder.
The, the, the type of alarm that would work is very specific.
Right.
Um, and the quote we got was much higher than anticipated, and so we're gonna have to press.
Yeah. We're still waiting for work to proceed from the public maintenance department and the masonry work around the building sidewalk for staff pensions, we've noticed that. So we're gonna come in weeks, Angel and other maintenance staff will start spring cleaning. Buckley elevator started the repair work with main owner, we don't have a time frame for it, but they've been here, they bought, they came in there with a big. Thing of, you know, barrel of oil to replace, flush out the oil that was there, but I don't think so.
So it's currently not working, but.
It's not, but it looks like we're a lot closer to it. But I, I can't give you an official, but the Buckley elevator folks have been here for the last, I think, two or three days, right? Working buildings in the yard, so anytime now. Hopefully before Rob starts, that's one.
Yeah.
Although, you know, it could then be his problem, right?
Well, it's kind of all our process.
Yes.
There's, there is an elevator in the back that works. If you have the code.
Financial reports, operating budget, well, salary budget, lines of expense, your open positions, supplies for girls, other expenses are our target for the, this fiscal year. Um, state aid, the following payments made, canopy, six hundred and twenty-three dollars, overdrive, two thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty cents. And staff day activities, thirteen hundred eighty-two and sixty cents. And state aid is on track to this, this.
Yes, about state aid, um, have we received our, I, I last, I saw in November, the state that started this dispersed. State aid towns, but Needham was not on the list.
Not on the first one, but it was something.
December, yeah, okay, December, so we've gotten the first.
Just by own, no, this is money that is in the budget for Needham that comes from the state to pay for these things, that's right. Well, it's not necessarily in the budget, state aid is something that we use for. Programs that we're trying to get going, or it's not in the operating.
So it's a complicated question, it's a complicated question in terms of. When the money comes from the state and it can only be allocated for particular uses. As compared to for the ongoing operation expenses, but that's something that, that'll take. Takes time for all of us to figure out exactly how that works.
And the trustees have the power to decide where the state aid money is spent.
Yeah, so traditionally, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, traditionally, it's kind of been like a pilot funding source to just see programs work. Um, I, I think, uh, like, because like for your things, no, that, that was the friends. Right, but, um, the website, the website is the friends too, but traditionally.
So, um, so as an example, for example, later on, during this, they're under new business, we're gonna ask for just the state aid, I want a particular thing we want to spend some money on. That's something that state aid will pay for, so there's, we, we, and I'll talk about this later. So just, just for example, it's twenty-five hundred dollars for overdrive, that's it here. There's money that the library pays for overdrive, and then this is excess that. The trustees have then said, we're gonna use the state aid for any overdrive as well, is that correct?
Yep, there, sorry.
Go ahead.
There's, uh, there's two lines for overdrive. As part of the Minuteman consortium, all of the Minuteman libraries have agreed to pony up a certain amount to give equal access to all Minuteman patrons. Then overdrive advantage is Needham budgeting money specifically for Needham patrons to access specific titles.
And that's what this.
And that's what that budget line item is for. Um, historically, the trustees have voted to undertake new initiatives or experimental projects. Um, also special projects, if you look at the report, the last item there is outdoor lockers. Um, that's a big project that we've been trying to undertake, which is having, um, twenty-four hour lockers where patrons could come. And not have to come in the building during open hours and check out items that are in a locker, like Amazon lockers, kind of that whole thing. That's a big undertaking, that's not an undertaking that, um, belongs in the operating budget. Um, partially because it would be a huge one-time expense. Um, logistically though, we're running into some tricks with that, because even though it's a non-contact way to pick up. It still would require staff time, staff logistics, protecting the materials from the elements and things like that. But at this point in time, the trustees have started the process of allocating the money. Um, if you're familiar with the ThinkCom, they, what they want to see is that the trustees. Are looking at state aid as a funding source and coming up with initiatives.
And not using it to replace.
We, we could, we could start a new collection, we could say, like, we're starting this new collection for something really specific and pilot it with state aid funds. Um, another thing to note is that this is not the same in all municipalities, but. The trustees have voted to hold on to money for a year. So in fiscal year twenty-four, the state is giving us two approximately equal sums of money. Um, we never know how much it's going to be. Um, the state has a very particular set of requirements for the libraries to meet for state aid. Um, when Dimitri and I talked about filling out the heiress report, all of the libraries are required to fill this out. The state is interested in a number of things that libraries are doing, as well as how municipalities are funding the libraries. Then they take the pool of money that they have and divvy it up to the libraries. According to some very specific guidelines that they have, so we never know exactly how much we're going to get. Which is one of the reasons that the trustees in the past have voted to set the money aside for a year to kind of smooth that over. So that we're never spending money that we're waiting. Um, so we always have that pool of money to draw for. Um, and Dimitri's right, we do have a couple of items that were asking one line to be adjusted and then one item to be added. But generally, what you'll see is that the encumbrances will roughly equal the amount that's waiting, less any. Deposits from the purchase. And if you want to talk more about it, I can.
I mean, honestly, at some point, I'm probably gonna wanna like.
Yeah, that, thank you, that was a wonderful.
Point comment about the, the lockers, and I don't know where I heard this from anecdotally, somewhere along the way. But that one library that had no problems with the outdoor lockers, uh, and, and including. Ongoing expenses, so that for them at least, it wasn't, it wasn't fair to think about it as a one-time expense. And so I'm just not sure if you've heard anything about that, but, but we should be alert to that, both in terms of. Whether, whether it does make sense and being aware that there, there may be expenses down the road that might.
And, and I think I shared that with the library, the college, the library. There was one, they had like three or four people call out circulation, I'd say, during the winter. And people complained their stuff wasn't in lockers, well, their stuff wasn't in lockers, but they didn't have enough staff.
There have been libraries that have had problems with lockers. Um, one of the issues that we're, we will run into is that if it's outside of the building, it's exposure to the elements, there is no place that we can guarantee. Just because of the wind, the rain, the snow. One of the things that we also originally were exploring was having it off-site, which was not something that we managed with staffing. Um, the MBTA won't let us have it close to their stations. Um, I think that's a security issue from their point.
I have to defer to you guys to figure it out, I just wanted to make sure you, you heard what we heard in terms of.
It is really nice sometimes not to be, um. A library that's, uh, trying something for the first time, it is really nice to let other libraries try it out and then to just take care of them. So there might be a time down the road that we don't pursue it anymore.
Thank you, Jenna, we'll get to the, the votes for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's still more, is there anything more to cover, or are we there now? Statistical trust funds and.
Uh, just press funds, it's still. Press funds for permanent PDF for donation funds. Three hundred and seventy-two dollars. And also just mention, while Newtown treasure has recently been hired, we have not ever seen the system which required to allocate. Spending, I don't know if you guys are, I don't think they've started.
Yeah.
I believe they were just.
They were just.
Okay, and this may not be first on the list, but.
I'd like to argue for it to the end of the topic.
Um, statistical report, you know, once again, last month, downloadable magazines, we use the Minuteman self-check, self-checkout app. Which is on the Minuteman app on, on your phone, figures are much higher than last year, website hits are also up as well. Adult reference questions and children's reference questions are also quite a bit higher than last year. Our programs seem to be trending upwards, it's been from the last few months, and overall, it indicates pre-stated trends. So, okay, okay, new business.
Uh, new business then, uh, do you wanna summarize the state aid?
Sure, first, so for us to vote on, um. We're looking at some, so we used Aspet already, uh, we're looking at this additional aspect box. Currently, we subscribe to two aspect modules, museum passes and event. And we're very happy with Aspet's functionality, customer service, and price point. We'd like to subscribe to two more aspect modules, one for study room booking, one for library things, study room booking, uh. So, uh, Allison accessed the demo version of it and found it very promising, what that would basically do is that patrons would be able to study. The book study room online, they can go to our website and say, I want to study for two blocks, and do that, see if that's available. I can, I can tell you, good menu follows that the reference desk gets, artists books.
And this was on our website, on the library website, yeah.
So that integrates with individual library websites, very nice.
It, it does, and so, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, just gonna ask really quickly, is there, is, is there a way to ensure that people don't sort of overbook them and?
Show, we do already have a policy about no shows and how long in advance people can do it and how many sessions. I don't think that utilizing Aspet for study room booking would need, would necessitate a change to the policy.
Well, we, we already enforce that, like, somebody's had three no shows, and then they call again, it's like, well, you know, booked it and held it. And then showed up.
Does Aspet record that, do we know by, if we use this massive. Um, module, would we know that people are booking it and then not showing and?
We would absolutely know if somebody booked it and didn't show.
Yeah.
Um, we only have three study rooms and they're really close to the reference desk, um. It's not something that would affect our ability to control for that. Primarily, this would be something that our patrons often ask.
Yeah.
Which is, as right now, they have to call and speak to a reference library, or they have to walk into the building.
Are there limits, can someone book it for an entire afternoon, for example?
There are limits and Aspet allows for that, yeah.
Is it still two hours?
It will stay the same. The, the same rules would apply, yeah.
And I'll, I'll say, what our favorite says, like, well, she has this, you don't have. This opportunity to say, yeah.
Yeah, do we find our study rooms are usually booked all the time?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I mean, there, there, there are times of the day and there are days of the week where they're more likely to be open. But we could probably have twice as many study rooms and still.
Well, the, the good thing is, is that if somebody comes who has booked it, they still have to check in with the desk to get entrance, so there's no. It's almost like the, a made to order, um, self-check on that, so that somebody. Not coming or not showing up, that's the reference desk, people will be able to see that immediately, because if they come like. Half hour late, then. Is there a way in the system for people to indicate that they might be late, as opposed to like, cause now they call, and they have to call the reference desk. If somebody, if somebody were that considerate, and they wanted to call us, they can certainly call us and tell us, but there's no way you can online.
With the new system, there might be.
There might be, I, I would not be surprised if there was, we have been really impressed with the level of functionality that Aspet offers. Um, they offer levels of customization that.
Doesn't.
We don't even need.
Reminder, even like with, with restaurant reservations, with the way that canceled.
That's my question, I guess, is does it have like reminders saying, hey, you have study room aid booked at noon on Thursday? Please click here to confirm.
Well, that would be awesome, and I'll look into that.
But Allison did.
Cause those are the texts I get from my classes.
Because that also allows you to control those rooms better, if someone does then cancel, then can put it back up for other people to use. We, we can check on that, I mean, it does have all sorts.
Yeah, I would expect that, but.
Yeah, resi, it's like resi stuff, yeah.
One more question, since there's such demand, right, more of the rooms, and Aspet, would they once, once a week at a certain time? Release, you know, would people be scrambling, do they have to, you know, is there?
They already are now, yeah, they already are now, like, every morning at nine o'clock, the alarm starts ringing. And then it can only be the people that make it through in the phone, and we have a limited number of staff working, and we have a limited number.
You have to do it the same day?
Um, I think we do it, yeah, we'll do, we'll do it.
This system allow people to do it, or we can advance.
You could say yes.
Yeah.
But it's not going to change our policy, and our policy right now is the day before to be as fair as possible to patrons. So down the road, that could change, but Aspet won't require any changes to our policy.
And just to use the analogy of Lipstaff, like, in terms of, once we start using it and tweak it and see what's possible with it. It'll certainly give us a lot more functionality.
If someone would have just hypothetically come up and asked if they could reserve it next week, because they have people coming in from out of town, is that something we could accommodate now or not really?
That would be against our policy.
So maybe at some point you wanna think about. You know, maybe it's not a problem.
Pretty careful analysis to make sure that it would still be fair to patrons if we were to do that. Um, but that would be something that we could do whether or not.
And this is not a problem, it's not like people are complaining about. To book things in advance, or are you hearing that?
I think what's happening is that when our study rooms are booked up, yes, people do want to book the next available time. But that would be a change to our policy, so not paired up all the other nature.
And that is on a rare occasion when they are all booked up, and the policy may get up to me, and say, that's not fair, actually, it is fair. We're trying to keep it widely available to everybody, and somebody's like, but I'm gonna meet him next week and. And, and they say, can you make an exception, I'm really sorry.
And the solution to that problem would be a remodel to the library.
Yes, well, we're still coming down that road, and this is the conversation, you'll put that on your list, fuck about with, with Rob. When he complains, you know, you have a list of things you, you wanna talk about, so.
Question about using it for a library of things, does that help you track the numbers over time? Because, you know, they even be on like.
We talk about that.
Yeah.
But it's a good question. And we're also.
Are we, uh, so there's a. Yeah, are you gonna talk about the second request?
Uh, I will in seconds, yeah, so, but the other module we wanna add is the library things. And that will help us ensure that, uh, it'll. We're still, we have Jenna has Jenna and.
Yep, Tamara and, um, Karen, who, um. Works with Aspet for the museum passes, she was involved in onboarding them a couple of years ago, when we started using Aspet. First, just for museum passes. Um, we will be meeting with Aspet for a tour, a demo of the library of things lending module. Um, and based on our experience with. The museum passes, the, um, event booking, and then with the functionality for the study rooms. We anticipate that the library of things lending module will meet all of our needs, probably exceed all of our needs. But until we have the demo, we're not as sure of all of the functionality and whether or not that would work for us. Um, one of the exciting things that we do know about the library of things lending module is that you could reserve an item in advance. Rather than waiting for someone to return it and being next in line, um, and this would be key for some things, like. If you know your karaoke party is going to be on a specific date, it would really be helpful to reserve the karaoke machine for the party. Or if you know you're camping for a certain weekend, then you could reserve the tent for that weekend. Um, this is something that our patrons have been asking for a lot with the library of things, because so many of the items. Um, you don't just wanna wait to be the next person, you, you do want it for a specific timeframe. Um, and that is something that the module would allow for.
That's actually why I asked.
Is that what you're gonna?
Yeah, no, that's why I thought you might be going there, because when I page, I've seen that, you know, when people ask.
Yeah.
And I, that's how they do.
Yes, so it's exactly, yeah, that's one of the major reasons that we're really interested in that. Um, again, with the seamless integration with our website, it would be a lot clearer, we could categorize them, and a, a patron would be like. I wanna start a new craft project, but I don't know what crafts to start, let me see.
I'm a karaoke nut.
Yeah, um, so Tamara does the cataloging, Karen works with. The patrons as they're checking things out, so they will both be reviewing the demo, um, to ensure that it will meet all of our requirements. So they will both be reviewing the demo, um, to ensure that it will meet all of our requirements. And Aspet also scales their prices, so we get a better price. Than you would think for having all four modules. So we're asking for.
So we're asking, so for the two module, we want to increase the, adding those two additional ones. So we're asking for both, to, to vote increases stated allocation for Aspet to three thousand, three hundred, the original allocations, two thousand.
And, and can we have the, the second ask and have one vote for the Tuesday they ask, or do they need separate votes?
I think you can do.
We can combine it, so why don't, why don't you describe the, the next request, Paul?
Um, the other request is for putting together a tip for a library pop-up, which will allow library staff to bring the library out. Allison and Jenna have researched and priced out a kit to include small papers, lightweight folding shelves and a real bag. Transport designs along with library flyers, book cards, card signups. Uh, library materials, patrons checkout and a library laptop hotspot, it's a still a checkouts. We believe the library populace will grow libraries visibility and position as the heart of neat standard community outcomes. What we're asking for is to allocate three hundred dollars from stated to create the library public.
And that's what that would be used at, things like the harvest fair, the harvest fair, like the fireworks, that kind of stuff?
That kind of stuff, okay, like already out there, community events. Yeah, and actually we are going, I think later this spring, right? Are we gonna do something down at town hall, right?
Yep, town hall has asked for us to. Uh, Dimitri mentioned earlier that Elliot, one of our children's librarians, did a pop-up at Elliot's school. Um, it would make this a lot easier so that we could kind of do it, we could schedule it and be ready to go in advance and just have everything about. Yeah, it would be indoor, outdoor, it would be at town events, it could be. One of the things that we've been looking to do is, um, going to the Linden Street housing and Captain Robert Cliff Drive. And it would be everything that we would need.
This includes signage?
Uh, it does not include signage. That would be something extra. At this point in time, we anticipate being able to use just a printout. Like a laminated printout and doll, um. I think that down the road, we might ask for a more built up kit. Um, but one of the things that we're looking at right now is something that would be manageable for one to two staff members to, to transport in one. One bag.
Well, it sounds, it sounds great to me. Does anyone wanna make a motion to, to approve these state aid requests? Second to Josh, welcome to the club.
You're in the routine.
I'll, I'll ask if, for all those who approve this, please indicate your approval.
Is it for both?
For both, yes. And anybody opposed? Again, unanimously approved with, with air hard steps. Thank you, both, both of you sound, sound great.
Then I ask you a question about the room. Is there a way so that when? Being here, coming in, I know that people come and go, is there like something like, you know, when you're at? Like you go to a restaurant, you know how when you're sitting at a table and they have something that buzzes to let you know that your room is available? Is there something like that that they could use? So just so that there's a, a even role? As opposed to somebody having to go up and knock on that door?
Or text, sometimes that, that head, that, I'll just text. I think I wouldn't be surprised that the asset might even.
Yes, I'm just wondering if there's some kind of component with that that would allow. Um, for people, the patrons that are already utilizing the room, say they're coming up to ten minutes before the next person's coming. Is there something in place to let the person know, please start to pack up your stuff so that you can move? So the next person can come in.
Um, I'm not sure if that is currently in use, um.
Or something similar to that would be, let's say someone has the room booked for two hours, but they only end up needing it for an hour and someone says, hey. If a room opens up, can I have it? Is there a way to, is there a way to build that into the function as well? Like with the taxes, students who are here in the afternoon study.
That's probably something more regulated, you know, the staff regulates it. Like if somebody uses their room and they come back, say, you know, I only needed for an hour and done. So.
My, I guess more specifically, I'm asking if, and I don't know if this functionality exists or not, is let's say my high school son is here studying. It's not that you're studying, but let's say he's here studying. And, um, he and a couple of friends, they wanna use the room because they need to discuss something louder. But they didn't have the room booked. And they're like, hey, this is available, can we get a text saying it's available? Like, does that? Does Aspet have that functionality?
I think you should explore the functionality because it seems to me a lot of the things we're talking about are the sorts of things that you might expect.
Yeah.
To be, to be included in, in a service like that.
Like a reservation.
I can, I mean, it does, um, have the ability for us to set up emails triggered by certain things. So my guess is that we've set it up to have an email when it's been approved. Um, and then an email goes out right before the reservation starts. Um, I'm not sure if it has texting capabilities. It, it only talks about email in the summary that I've seen.
I'll bet though, that's, I think the right ability to cancel. And if we cancel it, I would imagine that, that would open up on the schedule so that it would then become available for somebody else.
It might need to do it, drive, drive, see how that works.
What Allison said is that she's been really happy with every single aspect of it, that it meets all of our needs and.
Might be important to keep in mind too, to ask that it's designed for libraries.
Yeah.
So it may not have, it may not be as slick and streamlined as, as resi.
No, that's true, but you would think you'd be able to cancel a reservation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see as we begin to.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. What's next on the agenda?
You want me to take? Um, so under all this equity inclusion, which is real quick, progress in displays, um. Let's play first of all, for Women's History Month, uh, the library postcards, virtual program with real score and rallying against reference people in sports. In the role of public library and other mass libraries. For the new year celebration, the children's staff created a Women's History Month book display in terms of resources, um. Let's see, for adult, thirty seven adult fiction, thirty adult nonfiction, fourteen YA fiction, and nine children materials in terms of staff progress. Um, Allison led, so Allison this year has been the, uh, co-chair for the Minute Man D E I school. And she led the March meeting where Jeff couples with A L A's D E I scorecard and recycling accessibility tool. Uh, many library staff, many of us, uh, attended a D E I B focus group offered by the United States H R department. They partnered with a firm called Diversity in the Workplace, a solutions-based company which specializes in training, development, design. Communication strategies of diversity and inclusion in the workplace. There are several in-person sessions as well as Zoom sessions, so. Many, many library staff had an opportunity to attend. And I'll just point out, and, uh, Josh, you're, you're new, but you know, materials that we, Tamara. Has created the table that I attach now every month in court called the D E I staff efforts that has. Uh, all the materials that get tagged for what, under different D E I terms, so it doesn't look. We're working on making it look better, but the numbers are there. So then that's the important thing, maybe a little bit of sense of like, someone needs to fix the Excel spreadsheet.
What's that? I said, someone needs to fix the Excel spread. We, well, it, it's, yeah, it's, it's a long story, but we're trying to fix it.
It's on the to-do list.
It's, it's not Excel, it's not a program.
And, oh, I was gonna ask really quickly, i- in terms of how this is tagged, is it kind of a standard tagging system across multiple libraries? Or is it just internal?
It's just, it's, what, where is it?
Um, these are not Needham's specific priorities. This is something that a lot of. Libraries that care about D E I, these are a fairly standard, um, cross-section of. These types of categories, um, categories, um. The Baker and Taylor, um. Does, uh, a lot, a lot of library vendors, uh. Occasionally will offer the tagging at some point, so. It gets really tricky because some of them make you pay for access to that information. Um, but this is not some, this is something that. Other libraries care about, other libraries are doing something similar. Some of this information is not original to Needham. But this chart here does represent a significant amount of, um, original work. Between the selectors who are driving the movement of the selection as well as tech services who are. Um, double checking and then labeling these items, um, in the catalog.
It sounds like that's a lot of hard work, but it's, it's good to hear that this is kind of a standard set of categories, maybe someday.
Yeah.
Libraries will.
And it, it will come and go depending on, uh, what happens in the country too. Like some of these are not things that would have been. Important, um, like, you know, twenty years ago. I mean, and they were important twenty years ago, but it would not have been something that we could really. Guide a collection based on twenty years ago, um. And they will ebb and flow as our patrons value other aspects of diversity. We could, I don't think we're doing, um, own voices at this point. I know that that's something that's important to us, but I don't think that we're necessarily identifying a title as own voice. Um, but my understanding is that that is, uh, a growing awareness and that we, we might do that at some point. Or other libraries might be doing it right now, um. But this is just a way for us to tell you, we're, this is what, these are the things that we've identified as our top. D E I categories at this point, and this is how we're.
And these tags, these are standard, obviously standard D E I tags, these categorizations by these tags, for example, these. Fourteen fiction books that are under black, for example, those come from, uh, the, the publishers or those come from people here doing that one? Or both?
It, it can be both. Yeah, um, we contracted with a subsidiary of Baker and Taylor to analyze our collection. Um, about a year ago, and what it was is we were, we were accessing their knowledge about these titles, so. Book companies right now have recognized that there are libraries that do care deeply about D E I, but the information is behind a paper. So we, we ponied up, we paid for it, we got the information. And what it did was it allowed us to, without. Pulling out every single individual title and then re, re-identifying them in our catalog. It did a lot of that work for us. But going forward, we either have to pay to consistently have the access to that information. Or we're doing it manually, and right now we're doing it manually.
So when these books come in, someone tags them, the system adds.
The selectors are highly skilled and this is one of the skills that they have, yeah.
And the last thing to point out, and Josh, if you want to do on the, uh, we started adding on the last thing, there's a, there's a quote. A new item summary, it's a little bit of a sense of like, what, what's been added.
I, I could mention also, Josh, that, uh. Tim prepared, uh, a year or so ago, a, a set of materials to be shared with new trustees. Uh, that, oh yeah, no, that, that, uh, will be able to, to share with you. A variety of, you know, documents and other policies or collected.
Google Doc.
It was a Google Doc of some sort.
Yeah.
We'll track it, we'll track it down to share with you.
I could do that, I'll get that.
There's also a trustee input by the M B L C, uh, Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners.
Yeah.
That is incredibly helpful.
So.
That's just online somewhere.
Yeah.
We can help you find that.
So I would go to the website of the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners and get yourself on their email mailing list. Because they send out all kinds of so important and. And they tell us when the state aid's coming out. They, you know, there's a, there's a whole pipeline of information that affects libraries.
Okay, did you mention, I think that you were explaining that there's a new board member training. I don't remember.
They, okay, yes, I called up about that. Unfortunately, they have seemed to have discontinued. It was an orientation that they had every year for new members. I went to when.
Yeah.
I became a member four years ago and, uh, I think the pandemic hit and. You know, they couldn't have people in person and they have not resumed it, so, um.
But there's a lot of useful.
Yeah.
Resources.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm happy to read all.
Thank you, uh, I guess next on the agenda is to discuss the preparation for May's town meeting. At which we, you know, then may come up with discussion, uh, the capital request of library. Uh, I don't know if anyone possibly had any sort of tentative plans for how, uh, how we were gonna handle that. I know that I'll spend, I'm scheduled to go at some event. The week before town meeting, at which people are going to talk about, be available to talk. The citizens about the warrant article.
Members, right?
Yes, I believe, I believe it is. I don't know if any one of you ever.
What, what's the date, what's the date?
I, I'll, I'll check my calendar. I think it's like the week before.
Cause I don't, I don't think we've even gotten a notice about when that town meeting, pre-town meeting, um.
When it's, uh.
Don't think I've got.
Anna said it, it should be the last Monday in April, because that's what was in the minutes. Okay, you were. Were called upon her the last. So everybody ran. Yes, Airheart's now on town meeting, um, so that's good, um. And the way it works at a town meeting is that if no one raises a question about this bill or part of. The, the capital bill, then, um, then it just goes, it gets voted on without any comment, carry at all. Um, but if someone raises a question, then it could, you know, we have to be ready to, um.
And, and so I, again.
Respond.
I was planning to do that looking ahead, cause I was the chair this past year, but I'm no longer the chair and I. And, and technically not even a town, you know, not, I don't know if I would go to town meetings if you're not a town meeting member.
You could go, but then you're, you're back in the, in sort of the.
You know, so it, it may, it may make sense to, you know, and I'm open to this. I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do the preparation work. You know, beforehand, but, uh, it may make sense for you or Airheart who are.
Yeah, there's three of us.
So Kay, maybe between.
One of us.
Maybe one of, one of you.
I suppose the three of us can put our heads together.
Happy to, I'm sure you and Airheart could, could also do that. We can maybe brainstorm ahead of that.
And, and it wouldn't be so bad if the three of you rise. As the library trustees were also down.
If there's a question related to it, there very well could be questions, then we can arm ourselves with some answers to help.
So I, I was, I, I, I think we're well covered with, with, with Kay and, and, and Rob and Airheart. Being at the town meeting, you can figure out whether that. The other thing I wanted to just make, you know, the other thing I wanted to make sure is that I'm aware that. That there's some sort of system by which materials are shared with town meeting members before the town meeting. And I'd like to make sure that our letter, uh, in support of the capital request be included among those materials. Uh, and maybe that's something that I could follow up with Teddy Eaton.
That's good, Teddy.
Uh, about that.
That would be, yeah, that would be something to check Teddy. I'm sure there's a decent amount of lead time.
I would definitely just.
I'll, 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 I'll connect with Teddy, Teddy the next day or two.
As a personal request, is there a way I can get like a copy of what?
I'll, I'll share with you.
Thank you.
Stuff.
I appreciate it.
No, we have a space study that we've been dealing with. I'll try and collect over the weekend.
Went through the last like seven months worth of minutes, but like that level of detail is not.
No, right.
Which is.
We have our strategic plan, which is the big thing.
Yeah.
Should have.
I, I, I read the strategic plan when it first came out.
Okay, but, and then we also have the building plant, you know.
I'll, I'll track down.
Point, if I can, like, get access to that, so I can.
And Dimitri's gonna send you.
And you'll be, and you'll be impressed by the Google Doc, which is, which has been prepared. For you, um, so that's, I think, that's the preparation for the, for the May meeting, but nothing else to talk about with that thing. Thanks to the three of you, uh, Airheart and Ascension. Next on, on, on the business is, is to start our process with the strategic plan review. And as I described in the email, Megan and I were a, assigned, uh, responsibility for reviewing. Uh, with Dimitri and the, and the library staff, uh, the, you know, uh, under a template. That we sort of approved to assess the progress that. The progress that was made on on the various goals in the strategic plan. Uh we understand that this is all complicated by the interim status and and the fact that we have a new library director. Starting very soon, working with you and and so uh but in the meantime, to the extent that we can. Identify and evaluate the progress, the accomplishments that the library has made, you know, we we we'd like to take advantage of this opportunity to do so, so. Um we, there were two goals, one goals, one and two. Uh a a among the priority goals that were identified in the teaching plan and and Megan, maybe you want to sort of summarize. Uh talk about the first goal or I'll talk about the second goal, I described for you in my email, the process, Josh, you would have received it. Uh but using the template form that that we had all reviewed a while back to sort of make this a relatively straightforward. Effort driven largely by the by the library, you know, about, you know, assessing what's going on. Uh we use that form, Megan and I met with Dimitri, uh Dimitri sort of. Perhaps in consultation with others, you know, on the staff, I'm I'm sure, you know, put together the responses in connection with the chart. Uh Megan and I reviewed that and uh offered some comments mostly in terms of, you know. Identify, making sure we identify all the accomplishments, because there have been many. Uh and then Dimitri uh sent that to us late late on Friday. Uh so, you know, Megan and I had not discussed what he said to us on Friday. With him or or with anyone else or even with each other, figuring that we would all review it uh together now and. Maybe Megan will we'll 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 start the conversation about the first goal and then I can talk about the second.
Monday. Um so we have this chart that Jay has sent over, we can put it.
Oh, is there a way, somebody share their screen, I'm not on the Zoom, cause I I could go on the Zoom and share a screen.
You should be able to do that, uh if you can hook onto the Zoom, make sure that you do not have the uh sound on in your computer. Um for that, but you should be able to share a screen.
She doesn't have the Zoom, can you send us the Zoom links so that we can hear?
There's the link in the. Yeah, I don't have a deal with my.
Because I can get it on my screen.
Okay.
If you want, I just don't have the link.
Oh, actually. You should have it, it's in your email.
A link is on the agenda.
Okay, I got I got if I email to.
You're gonna do it, Rob?
Yeah.
You'll see on your screen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Six seconds.
I can read through it too, uh while we're going through, so the. I'll start the goal, first goal is to provide a seamless, efficient, equitable and outstanding user experience. The first objective was offer superior customer service to all library users. There were three priority action items. On here is for which includes setting in the staff day. Staff training for please twice a year and systematically, there we go, yep. Review all of these things of um in collaboration with the trustees. So you'll see the progress during the fiscal year twenty point four, we discussed with Dimitri, the staff day is completed. That was on March twenty second and there's a lot of detail what the staff. Think I need to talk through here, but that's all there in the comments, it's all really, really great stuff, the staff would be able to. To go through, I believe, was very successful, as well attended, Dimitri told us, um for the second objective.
I should, by the way, just mention to Josh that the the strategic plan included. A number of goals within each category and along the line, we've identified which would which would be the the priorities within each group. That we would focus on as a practical matter.
Now, I remember when the the strategic plan first came out, okay, I thought that through it.
Uh dedicated staff training at least twice a year, there's planning tours. Four and then the reviewing of the policy for the new director, which now we know. Great. Let's see, for the next objective, encouraging feedback and constructive criticism, hopefully discussed. Then and our objective. Was ensure the staff is appropriately allocated throughout the organization. With the two priority action items and quality of service hours, the workflow and. And we understand for Dimitri that the work has has begun and has been starting to look at it for the. Allocation of the staff, it's nothing is finalized yet until the new director comes in, but it it looks like the salary budget. For what, so she, the scheduling changes for fiscal year twenty five, determined by the former director. And um there is a great need for the order of the workflow here for evaluation, enable collaboration. In the areas needing further training and support. And it has begun with the lift staff or scheduling tool throughout all the departments. And implementation facilitated, facilitated an in-depth analysis of the staffing requirements. In each department, have allocated resources to receive three additional part-time circulation staff. The staffing needs for weekday evenings and weekend shifts on a rotation basis. Uh so these are, you know, in in process and you know, factory to to Jay and my um review will be met with Dimitri. We also have a narrative, I'm not sure if we need to read through that.
Yeah, I don't, the narrative really sort of just described the goals rather than describe the accomplishments for the goals, so I'm not I'm not sure. That it's necessary to really, you know, go over that, it might have been circulated.
Yeah.
We we did circulate it um.
So happy to discuss anything if there's more, more to say or questions for Dimitri here.
Okay, so just my first question is, um the notes and comments section, I, my understanding is that was where the trustees would weigh in. Say, you know, make their, you know, we feel like this has been covered or we, you know, we feel like more could be done here or. That sort of section, so isn't, am I, is that a misunderstanding on my part or where do the trustees actually?
Rob, do you remember what you and Airheart intended for that, in other words, these notes and comments could come under the progress category.
All schedule of the um professional development day there, does it seem like what that?
And I wasn't expecting all, I just I just put it there so you will.
Yeah.
So I think, I mean, obviously, you know, to some degree, this is subjective based on the trustees that are preparing each report, I think the idea. I don't want to speak for Airheart, um but the idea that we had was that, you know, the notes and comments would be, that's where we have next steps, that's where we have. You know, i- it's it's not like a good, moderate, bad evaluation, it's a, you know, how do we? You know, how far, how much progress do we have and what are the big areas that remain to be done for this particular objective?
I I would say the notes and comments here is simply the information about professional development day and that could easily go into the other category. The progress during. And leave open and leave open the notes and comments, uh Megan and I didn't have a chance to sort of. Review the second draft and get back to Dimitri before before this meeting.
And these are just drafts too, I mean, what we've done in the past is in for benefit of folks who have been through this process. Um we take all of these different reports that everybody does throughout the year and they're in draft form, so based on feedback, based on discussion. He, we're collectively free to change all of these or revise them as needed and then at the end of the fiscal year, which ends at the end of June. Um you put these all together into a single sort of strategic plan. Evaluate or not, evaluation is not the right word, strategic plan review for that fiscal year.
Yeah.
So there's a bit of wiggle.
Rob, you would think that I, we would put there what Jay and I said, which is, it's proceeding as expected, many things will. Be addressed with the new director.
And 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 honestly, this is what I anticipated, this is what I thought the narrative would be then when I was requesting the narrative. But we can put that together now. Megan and I.
Yeah.
Based on this information.
Got it.
Right?
Yeah.
And and maybe Dimitri, just for for ease of following up, if you can move the professional development into the progress. Category, will you open the notes section, maybe when I add notes, you know what I mean?
Sure.
And I think this is a really thoughtful, um well explained um. Report on each of these um action items, objectives, um and I appreciate all the, you know, thoughtful work that went into this.
And I I I'll just talk briefly about goal two, which was the increased visibility as a critical community partner. Known and valued by everyone who need them and, you know, for me, that's always been an important priority. Uh it's self-explanatory, I don't know that we have to read out loud everything that's here, if anything, you know, I, you know. I it it almost undersells our accomplishments in the sense that I I I think and we know numbers of people who have been reached. By these efforts and all of these children's activities and I wouldn't mind, you know, seeing even more information to 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 support. Uh all all of these accomplishments and 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 there's a reference, it talks about a reference to Alison. Uh Smith, but I think that's notable in the sense that he has community outreach experience and and is, you know. This is an important priority for her, and so I think having her involved with a with a focus on community. An additional focus on community outreach is 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 a, you know, an additional accomplishment for towards this goal. Uh and if I can go back just for one second about the last goal in terms of the the efficiency uh of the user experience. I'm happy to say that it seems like the hard times of of over of of months ago when we were so short staffed. That we were having trouble getting books on the shelves, that we've overcome that and 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 now. My sense is that staffing is at the levels so that we're, you know, in in a in a much better position than perhaps we are.
We, uh our tech services department, which um has four people normally. Um was down to one person down to the time.
Right.
Um and who has since retired, so now that department has four people working the hours that are intended. Um as we. Uh build a library of things, we might find that the the funding allocation. For the staff in that department does not allow us to do as much as we would like to do. Um cataloging the hot fiction book is really easy and simple. Um cataloging some of the other items and getting them set up for users um repairing a karaoke machine. Um are things that are a lot more time consuming and so um. The priority in tech services has been to get the hot new books out.
Yeah.
Um Tamara did a fantastic job um getting on board. Uh hiring and training Andy, um Luann has moved up there and has brought a wealth of institutional knowledge that. Was lacking after uh Manny retired and the the staffing changeover that we had up there. Um however, we are noticing that our circulation department is now understaffed.
Uh huh.
Uh which is a our next priority.
That's right.
Um but yes, we have overcome a lot of the backlog that we had with getting new materials out.
The new releases of the shelves are built again. Okay, uh but back to this increased visibility as a critical community partner, uh. I don't know, Dimitri, if you have anything you'd like to add to go along with with the description of the of of the great work that. Paul has been doing in the children's department, I believe that the numbers would be a man, you know, very high if you add up all the things they've done and all the people. Community events they've had.
I think if we consider the staffing issue they've had there and a constant. And drain and we've got another staff member that's leaving, I think their numbers are amazing, considering all.
Yeah.
They they are doing tremendous job.
Yes.
The staffing is always a struggle because no matter. No matter how often you recruit, get new people. Anybody who's got a professional master's degree, their goal is to improve, so they're going, that shirt is going to continue continuously. It's never going to stop, so that's a reality that we live with and but.
Yeah, it it it. You say that except it's conceivable over time that a reallocation of staffing levels with the more full time versus part time. Is something that, you know, might be.
At at some point, sure, 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 but for the foreseeable future, you know, that's.
That's.
That's what we live. So I think considering that, they've done a tremendous job.
We appreciate it.
Uh and and the the second objective in that category, that strengthening the relationship. Between the town and the library, which has always been strong, at least as long as I've been around, as best I can tell, but Dimitri's identified a number of that. Of 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 events that have gone even further, strengthen, we have that relationship and and we certainly bonded with them in the library director search. Uh with 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 all of their outstanding efforts to support um for that.
I was very happy to see this description of the notable efforts to enhance collaboration between staff and the HR and that there was an H, the HR. A department came and did a tour of the library, that's that's great, that um there's that, you know, a strong connection.
It's nice that more of the town staff are aware of it, many more of the library staff. It's just something.
Right, so float over here instead of by yourselves a little bit, and so it's good to have.
Where does that go, the town meeting members?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then in their goodie bag, they don't get a goodie bag. Okay, um and so, of course, Rob Montine is going to play, I I anticipate a. An important role when he introduces himself with the community, uh you know, a community outreach, just part of, part of his resume and accomplishment. Uh in wayman, so he'll he'll be happy to work closely with you guys and develop uh on on that front. Um anything else to talk about there to 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 offer or or comments or questions?
I would just note on the last item here, being trusted and reliable resource, or did you get to that one?
No, in in fact, I'll get to that right now, that's.
Sorry, I'll.
Sorry, no, that's it. My third category, become a trusted and reliable resource and to make you better, Rob.
I was just gonna note that the the library's social media presence, and this goes back several years, but it has improved. So much from my perspective with information, not just about the library, which is just kind of the base of it, but information about the town. And getting information out about townwide emergencies, about resources like the eclipse classes that the library had. Um about town elections and things like that, it's it's really been, I I think it goes to this goal of being a reliable resource of town information. It's it's doing a great job, I think, of getting that information now, as well as information about the library.
And 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 I I I I believe they're already doing it, but we're in a situation now, of course, a few years ago, we had the demise of the Needham Times. But now we really have three very valuable sources of information, uh a newsletter that comes from the town. Uh a a newsletter source that the Needham Channel distributes and of course. The great work that 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 the Needham Observer has been doing in terms of sharing information, so we should make sure, besides the traditional social media. We should make sure we're taking advantage of those opportunities to share information about the library.
I just want to add to what I was pointing to, um kudos should go to all the newer staff, our full-time staff, I mean, part-time staff is great too, but. All the full-time staff that we've been able to recruit and have in place of lost ones, they've done themselves, I really appreciate it. It's really visible.
Yeah, it is, it's.
Rob, back to the to the form, when you imagine then is 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 to sort of put a finishing touch on this stage of the review, is that? Uh as with Megan and I as the trustee liaisons for goal one and two, we should put together a short narrative that relates. Relates to this to go along with this, or is is that not the sort of thing that we're imagining is necessary?
Well, it's really up to us as a board, I mean, what you could do is kind of take the narrative and put it in notes.
In the notes and comments, some some sort of re- summary review about that in the notes and comments.
I I I don't think it would necessar- and.
Very brief.
We'll all use our own judgment, but you know, you could always do just a bullet point of. It it doesn't have to be a paragraph necessarily for each item, but you could just do a bullet point of, you know, progress, you know, the. Potential action items for the coming year that.
And future priorities, just some.
Future priorities, if there's any blind spots where there is, you know, there there could be a lot more progress, that would be the place to kind of. Point that out and and think about ways that we can achieve the goal.
Okay, we should, I suppose, plan on staring at.
For the next.
For the next meeting. That sound right?
Plus, Rob.
And you're getting, and you're getting started.
We are.
You're gonna get started with goals three and three and four, and we'll also at that same conversation here, this, you know. Sort of a revised version of this that has.
So does any of the other trustees have notes or comments that they want to submit just to include in there, or do we want it to be?
And you can feel free to do it afterwards, it doesn't have to be in this meeting, we'll catch you up, Josh, and Airheart's not here, so we'll send an email around. To follow up on that, but that sounds like it just. Thank you.
So so just to continue, so. So so just to continue, so what do we think is the best next step for goal three and four that Rob and I are supposed to. Work on. Just addressing Dimitri, do you want to continue this process for goal three and four?
Um, or what's your? We can, you know, you can you can take a little bit of it. When does Rob start? Rob starts on April twenty second.
Yeah, my sense is that we might want to do it because, you know, he will have a bill, you know, I'm sure his head will be spinning when he comes to the door or, but if people don't think that's. Makes sense on, you know, I'd like to hear what people think.
This may be useful for him and as as well in terms of getting a summary of. Of of these, you know, where where we're at on these points. Uh, I don't know that. He's gonna be in a position to really. Know the responses based on these past activities. Obviously, you 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 know, sorry.
Well, I could I could do what I did.
That's my one, Jay.
That would be fantastic.
The only only comment I would add there is maybe in this communication, but I I had imagined that we would be getting the revised. Form and then having a chance to talk with Dimitri again before we then shared it with the trustees. And maybe that's an extra step that didn't prove to be necessary, but you know. But we might have had, for example, a more refined. Narrative. To to talk about the accomplishments, but that can.
Sort of have an ending of all that too. Once Rob starts, and I know he won't have a lot to, but. It should free me up to maybe work on this stuff a little more, you know, my time has been really stretched.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, fair enough. Fair enough. I get it. Yeah, I get it. I mean, you know, so anyway, but. You may want to think of, you you worked that out with Dimitri, but you know, it it might have been helpful to have one more. Review. Both both for shared with everyone, not that it's. Be a a problem in this.
No, I think this is quite good and it, but you know, the your addition to the notes and comments in the next meeting. Um, that, you know, that would be complete, your part of the task, right? For the, and I mean.
Yeah.
Megan and Jay.
Right.
Your first two goals and then maybe we'll set up something for Dimitri for when when do you think would work for you or should we?
You can schedule a time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Midnight. Midnight.
Okay, so that's that. And now we're on to the old business. Is there anything to report about this equity improvement?
We did that before.
We just did that.
We did that. Yeah. Kay, talk about.
Yes. Actually, do it to me, we actually have some interesting things happening. Um, so I'm gonna pass these. I'm not sure I have enough for everybody to have one, but Dimitri and that's still our committee, which includes Dimitri and Gay Allen. And um. Uh, as well as representative of the Friends and the Needham Art Association. So we proposed, we've been, you know, we're researching how to get a more diverse set of artists. Uh, while also, of course, always giving plenty of airtime to our. Our wonderful Needham artists. Um, and one of our members are in a place saw this exhibit in Maine. Called Americans Who Tell the Truth, which is a, there's a an oil portrait artist who does, has. Over two hundred portraits of people of all of diverse origins who have contributed in. Um, many different ways and and many different realms to the American experience. And. So we proposed to the um. Uh, Library Foundation Needham, and I was at the meeting uh, last week. Um, where they have approved a grant for us to bring in, um, starting at next. Um, next uh, January. This, a set of this. This artist's large oil portraits and also do a talk. Uh, about his work. Um, and. Uh, so they approved uh, our grant application for six hundred and forty-three dollars, which is a pretty. Significant. Um, you know, it's not an inexpensive exhibit. And it's it's sort of a rotating exhibit and we can choose who, oh, okay, thanks for Gay to Gay for putting this up there. Um, so we, the committee, are gonna meet next and uh, choose and prove which of. We can't, we can't show two hundred portraits, but we're gonna get, we're gonna come with a representative example of their. Uh, of his of his work and um. I don't know if Gay or Dimitri have anything to add or say.
Yeah, about it.
Looks looks great. We look forward to this.
Yeah. It was very exciting that that um. Library Foundation approved this. About, you know.
I can tell you, the elephant is extremely excited about this. Um, I'm hoping they're gonna use this as part of their fundraising. In the fall as something to point to. Be very smart of them to do so. Uh, but that's up to them. Um, but we do have the artists coming down on Sunday, January fifth at two P M. To speak. Um, and as I, as we said. That's a Sunday, Sunday, January fifth. January fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, well. Models of courageous citizenship is is exactly the sort of exhibit we're 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 happy to host at the library. I think. I don't know that we need a vote.
We, I think we actually do. We have to, because the trustees have to approve every exhibit that's shown.
Okay, does anyone have a motion to to approve this exhibit?
You don't have to approve the funding, just approve Robert Shutterly's uh, exhibit for called Americans Who Tell the Truth. Um, for January twenty twenty-five, and I think we're gonna go six weeks, right?
We're going six weeks, so we're going into February.
Okay, so that's the motion to approve Robert Shutterly for January twenty twenty-five and the first half of February.
Did you don't want to just make that motion?
I just made that motion.
Michael seconded.
Uh, I was, I was trying to put it all together. That was an easy one.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Anybody opposed? No, passed unanimously again with Airheart's absence. Thank you. This 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 seems. This is gonna be wonderful, sorry. That's great.
It looks like Gay Allen put up. Thank you.
Rob, anything to to report about the MacIver? Thing other than maybe our conversation? I don't know.
No, there's no real update, uh, other than still working on getting a couple of of folks lined up probably for the fall at this point. Um, I'd be happy as, you know. As my role is probably gonna be staying the same to either do that personally or we can discuss. Um, what's due with MacIver, but we definitely have some ideas to hopper.
Okay.
Um, albeit very late.
Thank you. Friends and the library, uh. They had a great uh, event this past Sunday that unfortunately I was out of town. If anybody happened to go, I heard it went went very well. Uh, I was not able to attend their last meeting because I had to attend this this other meeting uh, where uh. Also related to town meeting, I don't know what that meeting, I don't know what you'd call the meeting, but it was a meeting where people relating to town meeting were. Were 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 coming and let but but let them know that you're available if anybody had questions. It was a couple of weeks ago. Gay Allen, what was that about?
So I can tell you. I can tell you that they had seventy people come to their event. It was very well received. Um, I think she actually even sold one of the books that she had written about this. Um, and there were no issues. That was the nice thing about this. It was a crazy day for us. Between the of all the people coming in for the event, all the people coming in for eclipse glasses. And last month's artist also came to pick up his artwork all at the same time, so it was a three ring circus here.
Wish I knew to get the eclipse glasses here. I I forgot. How many glasses did you give out?
One thousand.
Wow, 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 good for you.
Probably seven South Americans.
Yes, we're not, we're not. We are now collecting the glasses and we will definitely be sending them to the person coordinating the South America. Uh, shipping.
That's great. Anyway, I don't I don't have anything else to report about the Friends. Library Foundation, nobody here.
So I was there last week as the liaison and um, so other than this voting on this. Uh, exhibit, which was their main topic, um, they have some leadership transition happening, a couple. Several of their uh, leadership is stepping down and so that's kind of their main task at the moment is to kind of regroup and decide who's who's gonna take which positions that.
Okay. So it's a perfect segue.
Yeah.
Speaking, speaking of leadership, uh, a year has passed and it's time uh, to 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 rotate. As as they say, um, Airheart's not here. Uh, but uh, based on conversations that occurred after this meeting, taking into account seniority, I think. It was his turn uh, to become the chair. He had worked closely with Rob on preparing the the template uh, for the uh. Peter Clan review and uh, asked Rob if Rob was comfortable staying on as vice chair. Uh, and Rob said. Yes, sure to that. Um, and what's left is to find the secretary. I can, you know. Only say what I what I what I said to Megan, you know, when I asked her to replace me, which is that. Uh, it's really not not that time consuming a job and I shared with with you, you'll remember at the time, an example of of what it looks like in such. Nice form with the faith shares something with us and we review it and get. Relatively minor comments, you know, and it's much less time consuming, for example, than the time honestly that Kay's spending on the arts committee. Uh, or such, but but in any event, ordinarily, Rob has mentioned, this has sort of seated me that there used to be some sort of. Flow rotation where somebody went from secretary to vice chair.
It's in our bylaws, actually.
The charge into bylaws.
Mandated.
You know, uh, and you know, there was some skipping where people think Anna didn't want to serve as chair and. Things got a little bit, you know, off, but in any event, uh, we're at the time where uh, we do need to identify a a secretary. Uh, I we thought Hope maybe might be interested in doing it for another year, but. She's resigning. So Michael, uh, maybe maybe what we should do is. It is based on your seniority. Uh, share with you what it looks like because it's a relatively, if you're open to it, I'm not sure how else. How else to deal with it. It's it's a little bit soon for for to make Josh an officer. Well, that's true. Not the same, not the first day, was it the first day?
Of course.
I think I probably will, and we might not have had another.
Main, the only, really the only thing one has to do as secretary is. Once a month. Uh, the director sends the minutes from the previous and you read it, you proof it, and that's it. That's the whole job.
But I don't know if you want to do, you know, rock, paper, scissors between Michael and. And Josh and how you guys want to do it. You'll do it?
Yeah.
We love a volunteer.
The body's not even cold.
I have, I have good to you, Michael. You're on the road to vice chair.
So, uh, yeah, good. Because it is, it isn't. You just read the document. If you see any things that you think aren't quite right, you you um. Send it back to the director and.
We'll show you an example of what it is. It's 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 truly because Faith does such an outstanding job. It's 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 not an overly.
I'm not gonna question Faith at all.
Yeah, good. In fairness, Michael, before you came on, I was new to doing the reportments, so there were more things I didn't. Right, but now I know the flow of the.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes, that's just, it it's a it's a team effort and. We just, we have to hit the ground running because we are and we've had such an influx. And now we just need to move forward.
Great.
Yeah, so that that makes it.
The the, I don't know if there's anything formal we need to do other than to thank you and 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 see if you're willing to continue on with the arts committee. Do you have to do it one at a time or?
Um, well, we can. Write up the slate. I mean, for the art committee, yes, that's that's an official subcommittee and the chair has to be appointed by the board.
Right.
Um, and we need to also.
Have a liaison for the Library Foundation.
And the and Friends.
And the Friends, so. You know, I I've been the one that generally still goes to the Friends meeting, so I'm happy, you know, to to continue doing that. You know. I can talk with you, Rob, about how time to, you know.
Well, you typically, the chair stepping down here does the the foundation, but if you're saying you're expressing a preference.
Well, I, you know. I don't know who else would do the Friends if if they're not going to the regular Friends meeting unless someone. Hey, you know.
I could have stayed on the foundation.
Uh, how, maybe we can talk about the foundation and 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 maybe that's a, you know.
Yeah, I mean, and.
Something that I can take on.
I'm, I can, it's not, it's not a difficult thing.
It what, are you going to meetings once a month? Are you going to the meetings?
Going to all the meetings. I've been going occasionally and then right before this meeting, I usually reach out to somebody there and say. You know, we're meeting, do you want to either come or do you want to, um, you know, send a a little report?
Right.
Um, you know, it used to be that John Smith would come every meeting.
Right.
But the, you know, the board now is not wanting to do that.
And we've not not been getting really any reports other than whatever you might have to report back. So we can talk about. I don't, we have to decide that right now, though, liaison for the lives. Why don't we just?
I think it's.
Why don't, why don't we just start then by by uh. Having a a motion to approve the new slate of officers, uh, which would be Airheart Gray. Uh, as chair, Rob Pettit, uh, as vice chair and Michael O'Neil as secretary. Anyone want to make such a? And take care of the arts committee, uh, and we'll follow up another time.
And would you do the same, the Friends, would you?
I'll do the same for the Friends. That's right.
So so we know, so.
Yes.
What is it that you've said, uh, so that we can vote on all of it all at the same time?
That sounds right. So, uh. A motion to approve those officers and other positions. Anyone make that motion?
Megan says.
Megan makes the motion. Anyone second?
Okay.
Okay.
Got Joshua's second.
All in favor of 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 the motion to to support the appointment of those positions, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Uh, unanimously approved with Airheart uh, absent and thank you very much to all of you, all of you for stepping up. To do all of this.
Hopefully, Airheart, while I'm not met, agrees to be the chair.
He's in the loop.
Have a core. I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna note that Airheart was present.
Okay, that's 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 fine.
And Jay, thank you for being chair for the past year. In a year that presented plentiful challenges.
And and don't you feel like it's now that you're really getting it down, then you move.
I finally figured out this Robert rules the law committee. Well, it's always a pleasure to spend spend time with you, you you guys, doing the good work that we do and. Uh, as always, thanks to the staff there and we talked about you when you were gone once about the books and things you were doing. Yeah, so anyway, we we appreciate, thank you, you and Jenna as always. Uh, Dimitri, uh, and free chair with all the staff. Anyone else in staff who's watching, but I hope you know how much we appreciate you. Uh, thanks again to Allison Smith for joining us and uh, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, we have trust comments coming up.
Any trustee comments? That's right. Okay.
I'd like to take thirty seconds to introduce myself.
That's great.
So my name is Josh Leswell. Uh. Professionally, I work as an emergency physician. Totally like. I don't work a lot, so my wife actually suggested that I, when that position showed up on the Needham. Available. She's like, you should do that. We've been very strong supporters of the library for years and years. We. Don't the foundation. Get that glass thing, my name's up.
My name, very, very, yeah.
Yeah, it's like this, you know, something that for me is. Uh, a way to get involved in the town and something that both myself and my family. Um, find as a amazing and excellent resource and. I want to be able to give the support that I can, but also to see, you know. And we, we continue to make this a great organization.
Thank you very, you'll you'll find that your story is similar to all of our stories, you know, and that, but we.
This is not a position that like people show up for just like rent.
So happy, you know, to have had you here working with us and look fo- look forward to spending time with you and catching up, you know, o- over the days ahead.
Thank you for being so welcome.
Yes.
Of course.
Well, welcome aboard and yeah, I have another trustee.
Please, of course, hey.
Um, so normally we meet up, meet on Tuesday nights, as you know, and yesterday was. National Library Workers Day, um, where we wanted, I just wanted the trustees to convey that how much. We just said that how much we appreciate staff, but to just formally acknowledge National Library Workers Day, and I would like to um, present. Sometime this month, um, some kind of basket, gift basket for the staff, and I'm hoping that trustees might join me in making a small donation to. Um some kind of basket, gift basket for the staff and I'm hoping that trustees might join me in making a small donation to um to.
That's a great idea.
So that'll be coming along sometime in the next week or so, but and trustee. And chip in.
I've got your then.
You have my Venmo. Yes, I'll send you a a link.
I'll I'll mention again, there was a car test around that I haven't seen yet, uh but I I shared the email up here with you, Josh. Uh the email about the the retirement party for Teddy Eaton, uh which is, I think, next Thursday. If any of you haven't signed the card, there's a card here. We're gonna sign her um. And I don't think any other comments from anybody else now, maybe what are we doing for time? We're okay or ahead of time. We had a lot to cover today, so and we even talked books for a while, which.
That was nice.
Uh anybody have now a motion to to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, okay.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Rob, Rob second. All in favor of adjournings and for that motion, please say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Have a have a great week, great month, and then we'll follow up on all of this stuff. Thanks, everybody.